Cell phones off, I trust. And we will get started. Just let's tie this up so I don't have to worry about it. Okay, call this meeting to order. Appreciate you all being here. Obviously, we've got a lot of work ahead of us relative to the 2019 budget. So we've got a little agenda that we'll follow, but prior to the time we start, I'll just say this. This meeting is scheduled from 5:30 to 7:00 and to respect everybody's time, we will adjourn the meeting at 7 o'clock tonight, knowing that we're going to have many more, many more public sessions prior to the time we finish this process. Let me wait for our assistant city clerk. Now we're good. Now we're good. So that said, I want to start with introducing our soon-to-be hired city manager. Starts September 17th, Darren Tangeman. So we're glad to have you here Darren. We're excited. Darren and I and a number of folks I know have already had a chance to communicate a little bit and Darren, why don't you take a minute or two and tell us how happy you are to be here?
It's, it's good, it's good to be here. Like you said, Mayor Levy, I've met with the staff. I had an opportunity to kind of get my feet wet a little bit, but hopefully tonight is kind of an opportunity just to get started. But I don't, I'm not officially on until September 17th, but intend to try to make every one of these meetings for the future. I'm happy to be here. My family's excited too, so looking forward to it.
Well, we're glad to have you. They probably don't know that you're closing on your house soon, but you didn't tell me when that open house is going to be for all of us.
He doesn't make that decision. I think Mrs. Tangeman makes that decision.
Mrs. Tangeman. We're excited, excited to meet her and your two young girls. So anyway, welcome. Thanks for being here. I know running between two jobs is difficult and we appreciate everything. Okay, moving forward, I don't know how much time we'll spend actually on numbers and budget today. I want to really focus today on goals and objectives. And so before we start anything, we'll call roll and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Labarre?
Here.
Councilmember Sonier?
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Suzanne. You see your agenda and so we'll move on and have Suzanne, you want to chat before we go to Mike?
Sure. I just have a couple of things that I'd like to say. I'd like to first say, welcome to the 2019 Goals and Objectives Budget Meeting. The staff is very excited about this year's budget, the planning process and working together with the council on that. Mike will be kicking off the meeting and the mayor will be leading the discussion. We have a dry erase board here. We can write ideas down. I will be willing to do that as needed and we can use that. And we just want you to remember that tonight, the main focus of tonight's work session is to identify council's objectives and what you would like to see the city accomplish in 2019.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Mike and Mike, you can give us the second quarter financial report?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You know, I thought as part of this Goals and Objectives work session, what better thing to kick it off would be to be, to present the second quarter financial report for 2018. So before we jump into the Goals and Objectives session, this is the mid-year report or six months into the year or second quarter report. I'd just like to report the fund balances and all funds are, remain healthy. Overall revenues and expenditures are within budget expectations. I'll go into a little more detail on that in the, for the Culture and Recreation Fund, but overall the revenues and expenses are within budget expectations. Starting with the general fund expenditures on page one, I just want to highlight a couple of things. The report has other detailed highlights. I'd just like to point out a couple of them. Keep in mind 50% of the way through the year expenditures are within budget at 45% in the general fund. If you look further into the detail, you see the first line in there, elected officials, that's at 78% of the budget is expended. The primary reason for that is there's two line items within there. The community investment expenditure as well as the Main Street, Woodland Park Main Street contribution. That's a total of $50,000. That has already been 100% expended because we, we pay those upfront at the beginning of the year. So that kind of shows, makes the overall expenditure 78% as opposed to where we expect 50%, 50% of the way through the year. Also, a couple lines down, you have your inter and non-departmental cost center. That's at 68% and the reason that that is at 68% as opposed to being closer to 50% is due to legal services, which I think you all are aware that, you know, we've had a lot of legal services during the year. So legal services is 92% expended. We budgeted 130 during the budget process and we're already at 120 midway through the year. Two of the big reasons for the, for that level of legal services is hiring of the city manager. There's a lot of legal services associated with that as well as the help that we've received for the DDA litigation, including open records requests that were received for the DDA litigation. So those are the two out of the ordinary items in 2018 that we usually don't have in any other year.
Excuse me, Mike, before we go on, of that 418,000, tell me again, how much of that was attorney fees? Or do you have that broken out?
It was, right now it's 120,000.
120,000 right now. We have a budget?
Out of a budget of 130.
130 for the year.
I expect after this next month, it'll go over that.
There's no question.
Yeah. So, and then the other line I'd like to point out is the transfers, where you go down below subtotal operating, there's a line, transfers out. Last year you see that there was no transfer out of the general fund at this point. Now there's 208,581 dollars. That's the transfer to the Culture and Recreation Fund to support that newly created fund. And I'll go into a little more detail on that when I talk about that fund.
One more thing before you go forward. On elected officials in the 74,000, I understand why that's so high now, but based on the fact that we made those, those one-time payments at the first of the year and we're at the 74,000, do you anticipate we're going to be close?
We'll be very close.
Okay.
Maybe even a percentage or two over the budget because we only budgeted 1,500 for council to go to the CML conference for one council member. There was actually three that went.
Right.
So it is likely to even go over.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Turning to page three or the table on page three, it's the general fund revenues. At the bottom of that table, you see the total, 56% of the budgeted revenues have been received midway through the year. Again, that's pretty, that's where we'd expect it to be, close to the 50. So we're actually at 56%. Part of that is because, and then I'll move you back up to the top of the table, looking at property tax, you see that 96% of the budget has been received from property tax. That's because property taxes are due by June 15th and we, so we receive a majority of that revenue at the beginning of the year. Sales tax is 46% received. You may wonder, well, why isn't that 50% or higher? Are we behind? No, actually our, December is our big month. So midway through the year, it's 46%. It is pretty normal, but you know, we expect to make up a lot of that ground in, in the summer months as well as December.
Isn't that just five months though?
No, that's six.
It is six.
Yes, I've accrued it.
Okay.
Thanks for asking. Typically, well, okay, but as reported already, sales tax is seven, you've seen in other finance reports, the tax revenue report that I send out, sales tax is actually 7% ahead of the prior year. Lodging tax, you may notice, is only 38% of budgeted, but again, that's because most of our lodging tax comes in the months of June through September. So at 38%, that's not too alarming. Construction use tax, you see that revenue has already exceeded the budget by 26%. The primary reason that, that's way, I mean, we've done very well in the construction use tax is because first of all, we budget conservatively for that revenue because, you know, we, we have our best estimates as to how the construction activity is going to be throughout the year. And as being budgeted, the bud, the building activity being budgeted conservatively, it's actually a lot of activity, building activity going on in the report. This report actually has the list of building, or the number of building permits and valuations that we've seen so far through June 30. Business license revenue, a little bit further down under licenses and permits, you see that's at 95% of the budgeted amount. That's because most billing permit, I mean, business licenses are renewed at the beginning of the year. And then the rest of the months, there's trickling in of new licenses and so on. And then the last thing I'd like to point out on this page is the severance tax. Just go down a few more lines under intergovernmental. You see severance tax and that's at 0%. That's at 0% because it's a one, one, an annual payment that we receive in September. So having highlighted all those, you still see that our total general fund revenue was at 56% of what's been budgeted, which is pretty typical.
Council, any more questions about the revenue side?
Mike, what's in miscellaneous this year?
Miscellaneous, you know, just off the top of my head, I know 4th of July, revenues go in there and then gosh, sale of scrap metal possibly?
It's just significantly more than budgeted. There must be a one-time windfall or something that came in that's unusual?
Yeah, I think it's a conglomerate or there may be one larger revenues that came in there that wasn't anticipated. We just budgeted that very conservatively. I think every year it's over the 10,000 that's budgeted. On page four, the table, Culture and Recreation Fund. So that's, this is where I'll move into. I wanted to actually highlight this fund a little bit more than the others, other than the general fund. The Culture and Recreation Fund, as you remember, is a brand-new fund that we created once the Aquatic Center operations came on board. And it's broken out by revenue and so overall halfway through the year, 41% of the budgeted revenue is collected while 42% of the budgeted expenditures are expended. So just to break that, this fund down a little bit further into the three components, the Parks and Recreation part, component of the Culture and Recreation Fund, you see that 49% of the revenue is collected. And then looking down on the expenditure side, 38% of the expenditures budget is expended. And then kind of relating that to the general fund, that transfer that I was talking about earlier, we, we know that the Parks Rec, this whole fund is supported by the general fund. So with Parks and Rec, there's a total of 123,601 expenditures. 60% of that is supported by the general fund. Moving to the Cultural Center, 58% revenue has been collected and 35% of the budgeted expenditures is expended. And the same support from the general fund analysis, the total expenditures is $43,706 and 59% of that is supported by the general fund. In other words, user fees make up the rest. So in that case, 41% comes from user fees. And that's, that's pretty typical. We never really saw it that way in, in other presentations because those two, the Parks and Recreation part and the Cultural Center part of the, was in the general fund. So it, it was there, but it just wasn't broken out this way. So now you can just see it more. When we created this fund, one of the reasons we did it was for transparency. The Wooden Aquatic Center, 36% of the revenue is collected, 46% is expended. And so 36% also of the total 340,000 is supported by the general fund. So in other words, user fees in the Wooden Aquatic Center actually cover more of a percentage of the expenditures than the other two components of the Wooden Aquatic Center. 36% versus 58 and 49, or I mean 60. But the other thing I'm highlighting is where we're at in terms of the revenue, 36% being collected and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So as discussed during the budget development process, particularly for the new Wooden Aquatic Center, it's going to take us a few years to nail down the estimated revenues and expenditures. And as, as you can see in this report and as I just said, revenues are at 36% of the budgeted amount. This may be concerning, but you know, I just want to remind you that it's still early in the year. We don't know how revenues are going to come in during the summer months. It could be just like Christmas is to the general, or December is to the general fund. Majority of revenues and lodging tax as well. Majority of revenues we may see and as we start to go through the year, we'll see, gain more experience on these revenues.
But Mike, this is through the end of June or July?
So is 36% reflective of the early part of the year and then summer will increase? And these are just, you know, questions that don't, aren't the answer, but it is just to keep you thinking that, okay, it's 36%. My mind, sky's not falling.
Interrupt for a second. Interrupt for a second. Cindy, you want to weigh in?
I was going to turn it over to Cindy if I could finish.
Okay, sure.
Is 36% reflective of the early part of the year and then summer will increase the percentage? What will fall and winter bring? What will revenues do as the Wooden Aquatic Center matures? You know, as staff analyzes what works and then we adapt to what programs actually work for the Wooden Aquatic Center. You know, this is, we're developing these operations as we, as the Wooden Aquatic Center matures. But in total, expenditures are actually within 46%. However, as mentioned, the first quarter report, gas and electricity utility costs are higher than what we had budgeted. But excluding utility costs, all the other line items are well within budget at 41%. Additional detail can be seen on the Wooden Aquatic Center revenues and expenditures on the next page. And with that, you know, Cindy, if you'd like to add to that?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Levy and councilmembers. To just address maybe some of the revenue concerns, you might be thinking right now, if you recall, we started selling passes in August and September and October last year. So those passes will be coming up for renewal, especially our annuals. So there's another, another revenue source that's coming in. Absolutely, this year's a learning curve for us. There's a lot of learning things that we can look at this year to bring back into 2019. We still have more programming that's coming in through July through the rest of the year. This only goes through June, which was just the start of our summer. You should see some, I'm, I'm not too concerned at this point because we have not flatlined in at least what I'm seeing in our revenues on our weekly comparisons that I do. So we still continue to grow. And this, from January through the end of June, our daily admissions have been 9,153. Our passes that include the three-month, six-month and annual pass are at 83 and our punch cards are at 1,199. So it really goes to show that here's one learning curve as our punch cards are way bigger than what we anticipated them to be. There'll be an analysis on the three-month and six-month and see if they're even beneficial to be offering anymore. So that's one thing we'll be looking at for 2019. In our programs, our Silver Sneakers program has just gone crazy and that's our Flex program where our Silver Sneakers, if they qualify, they get to do water fitness programs at no charge. And Silver Sneakers reimburs us $2.50 per participant, per visit. And that number is at 1,233. Our water fitness programs, which include the punch cards, the drop-ins and our sessions, we are at 335. Our Learn to Swim program is at 274. Private lessons are at 47 and we've trained 81 lifeguards. And when, on average for our pass holders, we average about 142 scans of our passes on a daily basis. You'll see in your July monthly report that at the end of July, we unveiled the WIVIT, which is a floating obstacle course that goes into the lap pool and it's really is kind of geared to maybe a little bit of the older age group to bring some of the middle schoolers and high schoolers in. So far, that's been very successful. We run that on Mondays and Wednesday nights from 4 o'clock to 7 PM, which is kind of a slower time for us. So it's a new way for us to draw some people in. And then we're just coming into our fall program. We're setting up our programs. We're setting up some lane rentals for the Peak Swim Club. And you'll see in September, we're going to be offering a back-to-school special for 10 punch, punch cards for the youth. So that will be coming out here probably the end of this week or the beginning of next week. And then just wanted to let you guys know that we're going to have a birthday bash this year, the end of October, October 28th. Put it on your calendar. I don't have the time specifically right now and I don't have all the details, so stay tuned for more information. And then just one last thing I wanted to report is that August 24th through September 3rd, the facility will be closed to have warranty work completed before we run out of warranty period.
The 24th through the 30th of September?
Yes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Real quick question about the Silver Sneakers. We don't, we haven't signed up for the swim part of the Silver Sneakers entry part, just for the class. Is there any reason why we can't do that or haven't chosen to do that?
Since it was a brand-new program and a brand-new facility, we wanted to see what the impact on the facility would be through the fitness programs. We felt the fitness, or the facility wouldn't take as hot of a hit through the fitness programs as it would through memberships or daily uses. So now that we're getting a good idea what those numbers look like, we can look at that in 2019.
I'm kind of familiar with the Silver Sneakers program at different facilities. So I'm asking for, it's a walk-in basis for swimmers also.
Yeah, what it is, it's the daily entry.
Yeah.
And it's for so many visits per month or, I can't quote it because I don't have it in front of me and they give you so much per person, per visit. And so we considered it at the beginning of our opening and we just thought, we don't know what those impacts are going to look like. And so we tested it with the Flex program.
I was just curious in regards to if it's a plus or minus to go to that program. Obviously, if it's a money loser, it's probably.
And that's what we have to look at. It's absolutely a plus for the participant. I don't know what that impact right now is on the facility.
Right. Thank you.
Council, anybody else? Cindy, I'll say this, the response from the people that go to the pool has been flawless. I mean, you guys are doing a tremendous job. I wouldn't let anybody, including everybody sitting at this table and in this room. The Aquatic Center is going to continue to grow because we're doing a great job of managing it. And so congratulations to you and Karen for that. I think all of us might've been a little skeptical about at least our revenue projection for this year, not knowing, we kind of picked a number out of the air. I don't think, I think it's clear we're not going to reach that, but I see in the future and to what Mike said, first year of business, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to put a number on it. But know this, great job and you know, continue to build it, continue to do what you're doing. And I know you'll do everything you can to make sure someday we do a little bit better job financially there. But we all knew going in that aquatic facilities only do not sustain themselves. And so we know we're going to have to contribute to that on a yearly basis, but great, great job.
Thank you very much. I just want you all to know that every one of our staff members is revenue oriented and we're doing whatever we can to be able to continue to serve our community and still generate as much revenue as we can. Thank you very much for your compliments. I'll make sure I share that with the rest of the staff.
Please do. Mike?
That was it on the Culture and Recreation Fund. So just want to point out that pages six through 10 of, of this report highlight the remaining city funds, the, including water, wastewater, street capital improvements and stormwater management funds, as well as the DDA and grants fund.
I just had one question. I don't know if it's even possible for you to make any projections at this point. I agree with the mayor that the terrific management of the Aquatic Center is only going to, I hope, increase our revenues there. But for 2019, the transfer that occurred from the general fund for 2018, do you anticipate that we will have to dedicate more or less for the same?
The way it is performing right now, it would be less. Because that's six months through the year, we're only, we've only transferred 41% rather than 50%.
That's enough. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Any other questions about 2018 through June 30th, 31st?
Okay, well, I was going to ask for future and get your crystal ball out, see where we are at the end of the year. We've had limited staff, so that's saved us money. We've had some things we haven't spent on, I'll just say that. How far ahead are we going to be over the, for what we thought we would be?
That's what I'm currently working on as we start to prepare for the 2019 budget. Revenue projections are being worked on as well as expenditure estimates where we'll end up. You know, my, my early analysis, maybe I did it a couple, a month or so ago, vacancy savings. There is substantial vacant savings, however, there's been substantial extra costs related to hiring of the city manager, legal services that my first look at it, they're a wash. That's, that's one reason why, I mean, because they're washed, I thought we'd have more savings. But just the, the initial analysis, it's, it's a wash.
Didn't, wasn't there in the small print for the city manager that he pays back all that money that?
I missed that.
Did you see that Darren? I thought you saw that. It was real small.
I was kidding.
Real small print.
Okay. But you know, as we move in, as we continue on the 2019 budget development, that's certainly things that are going to factor into the 2019 budget.
Great, thanks Mike. Let's move on. One of my thoughts prior to the time we put this meeting together, and this will be my fifth year of doing this budget, it never seems to me like we've really defined as well as we could our goals and objectives. And so I want to start by doing that, including everyone at this table and anybody sitting here in the audience. But goals, and we can go around the table and I asked Mike to, he put these things together and just for an example of a great goal, and I'm thinking big picture. So in other words, a goal might be that we're financially sound in 2019. Well, what does that mean? Well, everything underneath that would be an objective. So let's suppose Noel, I know we've talked, we've all talked about, an unassigned fund balance of somewhere between 15 and 20% for instance. So that's would be an objective, in my opinion, under the goal of being financially sound. So I'd just like to start with everybody and some, I'm sure everybody's got a great goal for this year relative to the budget. And I'd like to start there and then we can kind of fill in the objectives behind the goals as we move forward. So the first part of the discussion, I want to be kind of big picture, how are we going to move forward? And it doesn't have to be just for 19. Maybe we're thinking about 19 and 20. In other words, maybe we can't get to 20% unassigned fund balance this year, but maybe that's a goal or that's an objective for 2020. So we get a little bit there this year and maybe a little bit next year. That's just a thought. But I know you all have great input and so who would like to start with one of their goals? Why don't you start?
Mayor, could I?
Go ahead.
Could I kick this off too? So as the mayor was talking about the, we wanted to define, normally the sessions that I've been to already, two, two sessions already, what I've seen are more objectives that the city council has come up with. What I'm used to and, and what I've seen in other cities are a definite, clear distinction between goals and objectives. And as the mayor mentioned, I just looked at some definitions of what goals are and a definition of goal would be general guidelines on what you want to achieve and they are usually long-term and represent global visions such as to be financially sound. Looking at objectives then, which would be under goals, or you could even think of them as priorities, sub-goals, strategies. So a definition of objective would be defined strategies, priorities or implementation steps to attain the identified goals. And unlike goals, objectives are specific, measurable and have a defined completion date. For example, under financially sound, restore 10% general fund reserve and also perhaps, you know, an inter, one that I've wanted to do for a while is create and then update a long-term financial plan. So those are objectives under the goals. So just to kick this off and facilitate discussion on goals, the broader concept of strategy. You can see on the, the list that was passed out, 2019 budget goals and objectives, the ones that I've seen in a lot of different cities that are pretty commonly themed. commonly themed, that a lot of city use as goals, they may be called something different, but they all pretty much mean the same thing. There may be others, I, I selected just some to throw out there for discussion. Do you like them? Do you want to add to it? Do you want to reduce it? Uh, they're not necessarily priorities, you know, like, okay, we prior, we prioritize this one over the other one, they're just goals that the city has to meet its vision and mission. Um, so, the ones that I've come up with looking at other cities are financially sound, sound infrastructure and public facilities, quality development, professional and committed city workforce, a healthy and safe community, an engaged and informed community, and quality of life. So those are ideas that, if you Google other cities, their goals, you'd see a lot of those in those, uh, as goals for other communities. I throw those out there for discussion as council view those as goals that we'd want to have. As we start to develop our objectives to meet those goals, are there other ideas that you might have? Take away, condense, change how, how it's worded here?
Thoughts? She start for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Um, first of all, I want to make a couple of comments. We just finished up a tremendous, what I consider a tremendous process in the procedures for council. It was absolutely a team effort with staff, with the city attorney, with the whole city council, uh, lots of good input, and it was, it was truly a team effort. Uh, a lot of times, these budget meetings get into an us versus them thing. I'd like to terminate that kind of thing. I, I really think we should sit here as a whole team and work together as best we can, and I, I realize we all have different opinions, we got butt heads on different issues, but it comes down to details and the objectives, basically. Goals are, are pretty easily, easily defined, or they're easier to not be controversial, I should say. So I want to congratulate everybody who, uh, who worked on that, and hope we can take that spirit forward with this, these, these sessions, because I'm happy that we're going to do more than just one. Uh, so, the, the presence of a team effort together, and let's, let's try to not butt heads so much in us versus them, remembering that this budget is the citizens' budget, and so, it's the citizens' budget to, uh, do, do better with the city. And of course, the council is elected by the citizens, and so, we, we were the first line of, uh, flak, I guess you'd say. But I would, I would really like to see the team effort go through all the way to the end, and, um, I mean, that's a general comment. I appreciate you letting me to, uh, speak my mind about that. I don't, I, I think these goals are fine, you know, we, I think others will have better defined thing. I just wanted to say those two cents worth for what we did in the past. I appreciate the effort, and I hope we can do that in the future.
Thank you.
Kelly?
Um, I just, I like, I, I really appreciate you putting financial stability number one, because you know in my book, it's, it's the, it drives everything else. Without a, a stable foundation with which to work from, none of this will happen. And, um, so I appreciate that commitment from, from the council and from the staff, and I know that the citizens will appreciate that as well. Um, I, I just have to say that, um, I appreciate that the staff and the, the management and the council restored that 10% reserve in the 2018 budget last year, and, um, I don't see that being a problem attaining that goal. I would, I would just throw it out there, I know that we're probably working on goals, but I would like to see, just as a starting point, the goal of a minimum of 25% reserve at the end of 2019, and, um, three months is, is, uh, acceptable and, and comfortable. Uh, greater than that is always helpful, but there's a balance between too much and not enough, um, because then we're not investing as we should in our community and our infrastructure and, and those things that our citizens look for. So, um, financial stability, I think will feed the rest of it.
Um, I'm sorry, go.
I'm finished, thank you.
Um, I just, I just wanted to separate the two topics, goals versus objectives. So what the things underneath that are objectives, and what I did is I took 2018's work session, just for example, I listed 2018's objectives that were talked about. The ones in bold are the ones that actually count came, council came to consensus as, you know, something that we really wanted it to identify as something to work on in 2018's budget. So the things listed in 2018 are actually what we talked about last year, and I just put these here for example, how they would fit, how they would fit underneath the goals that, that I'd like to get consensus on moving forward as we, then we move into the next part, goal, uh, objectives.
Of objectives. Thank you.
So understand, everything that you see here underneath the goals are things we talked about at the 2018, last year at this time. These things you'll all remember, somebody, we talked about all of them. Um, and so that's why they're, they are here. So I think what we'd like to do, if it makes sense to everybody, is let's try to define the goals first and foremost, and then we'll get behind it with the objectives. Um, and I don't know if it's, I mean, one, one goal may not be enough, eight might be too many, but that's why we're here to discuss it. So, um, that said, who would like, I mean, financially sound, I'm sure is going to appeal to everybody. What's more important than being financially sound? Does anybody disagree with that? Um, I was just looking around for that scribe. Can you do that? Great, thank you. Um, I don't know if you want to do it there, or if you want to just sit there and take, if you just take minutes and then get them back to us, I think that'll be fine. No minutes. If you'll take notes and send them to us?
I just don't want anyone to expect minutes.
Okay, no minutes, but notes. So the notes might look like the goals and the objectives that we talked about.
Okay, Mr. Mayor? Um, I, I think the way Mike has laid this out actually will lend itself to our, um, our projections for 2019. Uh, a goal to be financially sound, uh, all of those that fell under that, I think truly could be part of an objective, at least three of them could be. So my, my goal as it was last year is not only financially sound, but stabilization, financial stabilization and accountability. Um, I, I would truly like to see us reach a 25% reserve, but, uh, I think stabilization may be the catchphrase for 2019. Uh, I'm, I'm very pleased with the numbers we've seen on the Aquatic Center, but we, we still don't know how much it's going to cost to, to run. So, financial sound, soundness, um, is important, but at this point in our budget, I think stabilization is as important.
Carol, let me ask you this, and I don't know the answer, I'm just, just wondering out loud. Um, last year at this time, we were about five to seven percent, um, unassigned fund balance, which obviously was too low for all of us. Um, what do you think the chances are in two years of getting from, say, 7% to 25% without being able, with, and continue to be able to stabilize what we're doing? Or do you think that might be something that might take a couple of years? I, I don't know the answer to that.
I, I don't know the answer either, but I, I do know this, that, um, we don't know how much it's going to cost to heat that Aquatic Center in the black. If we were to maintain the budget lines that we've had for 2018 into 2019, um, we may be able to attain or attain 10%. We're proving that right now. Uh, to go above and beyond that, then there will have to be cuts.
Mike?
Uh, just again, Mayor and Council, if, if I may, um, going in that route is going back into objectives, and I'd still like to wrap up the goals part piece of it. So just, the bullet points are the goals, and, and I would like to know, and, and we can rename it, so I, I hear you on financially sound and.
Financial stability would be a better.
Stabilize or stability.
Financial stability is more vital.
You also mentioned transparent, and that would fall actually under another goal, uh, labeled engaged and informed community. Um, so if we want to add transparent to that as a, as the title of the goal, you know, that definitely is, is for consideration. The, the rest is getting back into objectives, which I, I mean.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
All appreciated.
My, then my, my recommendation for a goal is financial stabilization for 2018, or 2019.
In lieu of financially sound, it's saying the same thing, but more. Would you agree?
Yeah, I, because I, I believe our finance department and, and the city staff are, uh, try to attain financial sound, soundness, if that's a word or not, but for us right now, it's about stabilization. What, what, you know, was the 2018 budget appropriate for us to maintain any reserve, or was it not appropriate? So trying to figure out how to stabilize our budget in order to attain that 10% reserve, at least for 2019, and hopefully 25% beyond that, you've got to stabilize.
Absolutely. You can't build on a foundation that's not reliable. I think stabilization is the perfect descriptor. Thank you.
Okay, who's got our second goal in mind? Big picture.
Yeah, I could, maybe just walk through the list then and just get council's opinions on each one individually. So the next one would be, we, we all like financially sound, reworded, if, if it needs to be reworded, but what about sound infrastructure and public, and sound in public facilities?
I would get rid of the word sound. Sound is, is very objective.
Okay, I can definitely look at other ideas, or if council wants to give me ideas on how to reword that. There's plenty out there. I, I saw that particular concept worded many different ways.
Well, infrastructure and public facilities, um, continued improvement, continued investment, continued maintenance.
Is it, is it, um, maintain and sustain infrastructure? I'm not looking for any capital projects. I think at this point, if, if our goal is to stabilize, then it's, but we, we have to do that while maintaining safety, we have to do that while maintaining our current infrastructure. So it, it's so conservative, but I would say it's maintenance and sustainment.
I would also suggest though, Carol, we have the 410 Fund, which is meant to be spent in capital improvement, and that also includes maintenance, that also includes things like the Park Street project for drainage. This year, we've seen some areas that are very compromised with stormwater management, so maybe some focus on that type of infrastructure.
As an objective, um, would you consider improvements to those particular areas part of the maintenance?
Uh huh.
So a goal would be maintenance, and then an, an objective would be improvements to Park Street, et cetera.
But the big, the big category here is going to be maintain and sustain infrastructure and public facility?
That, that's my recommendation, and I.
Reworded, take away the word sound and, and come up with maybe a similar concept, but I'll, what I can do is just look at rewording that, but I, I, I hear the direction. And we can, I can send out another example of, uh, how the goal will be called, but it is definitely, we still want to maintain our.
And sustain.
Infrastructure and public facilities.
Noel?
Okay, um, I, I kind of feel like this was just thrown on us, and, and I think this is great, and we can find our goals. Uh, for the last two or three months, I've been begging for this goals and objectives meeting, and so I, I have a lot of actual objectives. I'd actually, these are fine for goals. Uh, I wish we had more time, I wish this was sent out to us earlier.
Noel, this is absolutely nothing. This is just, we wrote down a few things just to start the conversation, so don't, don't feel like.
I can start the conversation.
Let's do it.
But I have plenty to start the conversation. Good. Because I feel like we're tiptoeing around a lot of things here, and I'd like to just jump into it, and Val and I have a litany of lists that, that recommendations, and we can then, if you feel they should go into each goal, we can drop them into each goal.
Yes.
And then we can talk about each one and how, and where it is on that list.
I agree.
But I'd like to start getting our hands dirty. I feel like we're tiptoeing around things right now.
But, what, what a lot of cities do, and it's part of a strategic planning process, which we don't have the time right now to do, or maybe even, I mean, I, I would definitely love to see at some point in the future, a facilitated strategic planning process, where you develop a mission, or revise the mission, develop a mission statement, and then you develop goals to meet those, and then during this process, we already have that set, and these could, these goals could remain year after year after year, or be changed as we go into a more defined strategic planning process. But, you know, what I'm used to seeing are goals, because we call it a goals and objectives session. So what I was trying to do is identify goals, and then what we're used to in the past few years that I've been here are more objectives, and I know the, what you're referring to are objectives, that council doesn't have to do that tonight. You can, you can, we can put all of our ideas for objectives up on the whiteboard, and then, I don't anticipate council in this session being to align those to each of the goals that we've all agreed on. We can take that back to our desk and do that, and then put it back out to council. So I just want to get, again, get consensus on this concept of putting together goals, bigger picture goals, longer-term goals, and then go into the meat, the dirty part of identifying the, that was, word. Object, or get our hands dirty anyway.
Right.
Of objectives. So again, if I could just, just go through these goals, get consensus from council, say, and you, I, I think I heard you, you like these ideas of goals, and then we start talking about this and align them with all these different goals, um, so.
These are fine, these are great. It's, it's, we're, for the council members that have been here for a while, and you've been to the old goals and objectives meetings, it's just, uh, here's the whiteboard, just throw things down. So I like the structure. Uh, I think we can build on this, and every year build on it and make it stronger and stronger.
Perfect.
We have a new city manager, he's going to help build that. Um, so I'm good with this. I, I would like a little time to step back and, and process this information. I do have a, a list of objectives that we can fit into these, and then may, maybe later adjust it. I mean, obviously, it's a living document, so we can always adjust it, it's not set in stone.
Right. Noel, if you're good with these, and the rest of council is good with these.
I am.
Then we can use these as the goals, and then do what you say, and jump right in, and your list, we can see where they fall.
That's fine with me.
Mr. Mayor, I'm good with that.
Paul?
I was looking at our goals as a big objective, the projects, and we're very well-known. We have started, uh, Woodland Park Transit Project, uh, five of them have been added to the list with C.D. and the P.P.A.C.G. Uh, we need continuance for the city, county, council, and the citizens through Woodland Park to move these projects up. Today, talked with John, and, uh, he's going to set up a meeting with Karen, with C.D. for us, Neil. So that we can talk about two of the projects, and that would be Highway 67 corridor improvements, Phase One, which takes care of the drainage, widening the lanes, giving us acceleration and deceleration lanes, and, uh, we already have our buy-in for that, our design already done. And that's an easy one, and then no cost to the city. And then on 24, uh, pedestrian safety and common traffic is a good one, and that, we're looking to try for 2019 to have that on. The other three will be longer, but not the trail. American Discovery Trail Connectivity, which could be looked at as a project pretty immediately in 2019, and would not cost us very much, because it's not that high-dollar project. And then the other two, the 24, uh, study for a reliever route, and then 67 Phase Two, which would extend 67 further down, research, and out further with acceleration and deceleration lanes. So these are long-term goals, or setting the city of Woodland Park up for, uh, reclaiming our streets and becoming a small-town main street, uh, situation, and, uh, giving relief to the people who want to enjoy the amenities that we have, camping, hiking, skiing, other things, and also freight for mines and other industries that may develop up past Woodland Park. And so, these are already set and on the board. What we need to do now is continue moving forward with them, with the support of everyone understanding it, this is not an immediate thing, please don't get me wrong. Please don't get me wrong, but this is a goal setting up for the future of Woodland Park. Another important one, looking at goals for Woodland Park. Main Street has been successful...
Are you talking about goal, or are you talking about objective?
I'm talking about a goal.
Mayor, council, that... I mean, what I'm hearing are more objectives that would fit underneath the goals, and I'd like to wrap up the goal part of this discussion and then move back into the objectives.
Okay.
I mean, they're commonly... It's a commonly confused and interchange terminology, which, you know, it's understandable. However, you know, we want to identify goals versus objectives. And, I mean, because a lot of this stuff, we could be writing it up on the whiteboard, consider it for consensus at the end of the discussion. But back to goals. Am I hearing all of council liking these so far? I'll take it back. I'll reword them. Are there any others that you see that's worded differently, different language?
Go ahead, Noel. If I may, please, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I think in general terms, they look great. I would suggest that we, if we need to modify them as we go through the process over the next, how many ever process we have, including today, that we can tweak them a little bit. We'll just tweak them. But I looked at them quickly, and I don't see anything wrong with these categories.
And that was the intent, is just give you something to consider, rather than, Sarah, and have you come up with them. I wanted to give you a start, a starting point. And we can definitely compile what we have today, taking what I've heard so far on the two of them, rewording them, and then send it back out and get the feedback.
So just to go further with that, I think you'd probably get concurrence from the council on that.
I'm fine with these goals.
Yeah. A bunch of us, through this document, which you saw, I talked to the acting city manager about this as a working document. This was... This is objectives. And my intention was, I handed it over to the city manager to say, let's use some document, this plus this, whatever, as a big pile of stuff for us to look at. And the treasurer, look at how we can do each of those things. This document came from several people, city staff, directors...
I have to interrupt here, Val. If that did come from several people, was there a committee established and approved by the council to do so? I read that as your input, and I think there's some great ideas in there. But if it was a collective among other council members, a group of which I was not included...
No, it was not.
Then it's inappropriate.
It was not.
But if that is your input, I think then we assign it as objectives to the goals that were established.
So as you know, individual council people can talk one-on-one to people. Noel and I have talked together. Ben Sheets and I talked together. I've talked with Mike. I've talked with Kip. Talked with the city manager, all individually, and said, hey, what's all your ideas? I solicited ideas from other people. So no, there was no untoward meeting, as you're implying, and like to do often with me. But this was a collective of items to put on the list.
Why don't you start, then? Because we're pretty good with goals.
Well, are we... But I did want to ask for clarification, because Paul brought up some very good background information on the goals of the different... of the committee that he's been participating in. What we don't have is a city strategy. And a city strategy could incorporate these types of goals, and we don't have that. And I would like to see that as an objective. But I would suggest that if we're good with these goals, that maybe the meeting could end, and people could go back and begin to look at objectives to fall under those goals, and then bring them to a second work session.
Go ahead, Mike.
That's an idea to consider. Before we do that, let me just go on, since we've got a consensus on the goals, kind of talk about what I then saw on the next agenda item as objectives. And then we can decide, do we want to stop the meeting tonight, and then have you go back and think of goals? Or, I mean, objectives. See, I even interchange them. Or continue that tonight and then get consensus. So let me... This was what I was thinking for tonight's process. So now to meet these goals, this is what I'm sure you came all prepared to identify our objectives. So tonight is for council to identify their objectives for the 2019 budget. You may have even identified objects tonight that could be for a future year. That's okay, because one objective that I'd like to see is a master, a long-term financial plan, which those would be built into. So I've already talked about this, where just, for example, 2018's objectives that came out are listed on here, for example. And then, you know, I was going to move on. After we've identified, or council has had a chance to list all their goals, then we look for consensus on which ones are, you know, council's, ones that they'd like to see as a consensus in the 2019 budget. But I also like to say, keep in mind that staff will also be working on its objectives to meet each of these goals. And, for example, again, I'll use the long-term financial plan as, you know, something that I'd love to see. Another thing is, is an investment policy, updated investment policy. So those are just examples from the staff, and we have many others, that we would be working on internally, along with the analysis that we'd have to do from the consensus gained on the council objectives. So if you want to continue that tonight, great. If you want to take the time and go back and then formulate objectives based on now the goals that we've agreed to, I leave it up to...
You know what? We're here. I'd like to spend the next half hour, and if we got the goals lined out, then we can start with Mayor Protem Carr and Councilman Sawyer, and just start at the top, if you want, and we'll try to figure out where we're going to place those. And then we'll just have a better document the next time we get together, or a more complete document.
Well, I have another question or clarification. I had about 10 minutes to look at this particular document before I came to the meeting. And I think a lot of them are great ideas, and I'd certainly concur with them. But are we looking at objectives to reach these goals that have a dollar amount tied to them, or are we looking at ideological goals and objectives?
Where do you start?
The answer to that is yes.
Answer to that is yes.
Absolutely.
So you just want to talk... You want to talk everything. So it could be spend money, or just something...
Or budget neutral. Or budget, you know, something that generates savings or revenue.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to also, if you don't mind, inject that. I think council needs to remember, just something that I noticed in the communication that came out. It is not the council's job to make policy regarding staff. That is the city manager's job. And so we can make, like, decisions organization-wide, but to direct staff decisions about raises or things like that, that's based on performance, which is determined by supervisors, that is communicated up the chain to the city manager, and that's how that works. So I think we need to stay out of those weeds and be more of a policy-driven, instead of employee and personnel-driven. There's a Personnel Manual, probably could use some updating, I'm sure, just like the investment policy, that really guides a lot of that. And is the document that the manager, the supervisors, and the employees count on for making choices in their day-to-day activities. So we just need to remember that and stay out of those weeds, because that's their job.
I agree with you, yes and no recommendations. With all those recommendations, we are on the outside looking in. Sometimes we can see the flaws, and people that aren't doing the job can't see the flaws. So sometimes we can make recommendations. We can also have ideas.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ideas, that's us together are stronger than individuals. So we can give the staff ideas, a lot of recommendations. And so, plus with the budget, the staff raises, we decide a company of four, the city manager to give those raises. And then we can give recommendations to how much we feel should be... The employee should get...
No, we cannot. Organization, not individual employees. Charter...
How could you recommend... How could you recommend...
Not individual employees, but recommend that maybe us...
No.
A base raise of 2%, and then on top of that, whatever.
You mean for the whole pool?
The whole pool.
Yeah, yeah.
We provide the funding.
I'm glad you guys were just interrupting and not just...
You're listening. It didn't sound like that. It sounded like you were saying...
Individual employees.
Yes.
No, we would never do that.
Because you had a bunch of people confused.
I'm sorry.
So we are listening.
Okay.
So I guess... Start. Get your fingers wet. One of you guys.
Val? So I spoke with the acting city manager quite extensively a few times about this, and my intention was to get a big pool of stuff. I'm really interested in what the staff has to say, more than the people. I mean, I talked to Ben before I left. I talked to Kip. Talked to several of the staff, including the city manager, who's got a lot of great ideas. And I threw all those in here. So some of these are mine. The majority of this document's from other people.
Darren, you had some thoughts on that?
If I could, maybe from Carr and... I have talked to the staff. The process that I'm accustomed to is, and a lot of these are some of the things I'm sure we will discuss with the staff, but coming back, getting the staff together, because they're going to have their own individual budgets and priorities, bringing those together. And that's bringing that a prioritized list to this meeting, these objectives to this meeting, so that city council can put their objectives in here, staff can put them in, and there could be a joint discussion on those. At this point, I don't know, I'm not sure of the deliberations behind the staff piece, but I know they've not been prioritized by staff in terms of by department or as an organization altogether. And I'd like to be able to do that with the staff, so that you understand where the staff sees it, and you can make a more informed decision on those priorities. Let me present those to you.
Are you recommending that we wait for staff before we come up with objectives?
No. I think what I'm saying is that this is an opportunity for the council to present your objectives, and then we would come back the next meeting, or whenever we can get that done, Suzanne, as the staff brings some prioritized... the prioritization of those objectives for discussion.
That makes sense. Makes sense.
I like that.
We've done that in the past, where we, council gets together, does their goals and objectives with the city manager, and the city manager goes back and comes back and tells us, hey, we tried this, we tried this, we came this direction, or this can't be done. So, yeah, we have all the opportunity to look over what we're...
And I always want to echo what Mike said earlier, in that this is an opportunity for the council to come up with your objectives. The staff's going to... Once you achieve consensus on that, the staff's going to have to come back and do some analysis on it, until you, of course, have the time, staff and resources that you require for that, or even if it's financially feasible. So that would have to occur at some point in this as well, obviously. So there's... I won't jump on Mike. I think Mike is leading, so I'll...
No, it's fine.
...do the discussion and...
Thank you.
You want to place some of these items on your list?
I'm not sure.
Give me your biggest objective for the year.
No, I mean...
Give me one.
I threw out a bunch, and I tried to categorize them. You can see them. You're going to be the one looking at this. Yeah. So we tried to categorize them. Council budget recommendations. One of the problems that we have in the past is, we haven't allocated enough to education of the council. The staff has complained about it often. And a lot of us would like to have some allocation in the budget for education, seminars, tutorials, and actually budget for it, instead of, like, we're negative on a CML kind of thing. And not just for CML, but for training in areas that council... I mean, I'm an aerospace software engineer, you know. There's... Everybody here's got a different expertise, but we're not particularly necessarily adroit in things that we should be useful. What it will do is help staff communicate with us. So I threw out a number, $1,500 per council member as an allocation for the budget. I think it's very useful, so that we can do some of these educational things. City manager action recommendations are obviously none of our business. These are what Noel calls ideas and recommendations. The first one comes directly from Ben Sheets. He says, we don't need this type of thing. Now, that's going to be up to you folks to decide, but a lot of these are just throwing stuff against the wall and kind of collecting ideas. So the first one is, we don't need two different directors. There's probably a cost saving there. So you notice there's question marks everywhere. This is the finance director, the city managers, you know, they'll figure out if these are viable, what they cost, et cetera. Lodging tax is a recent community problem that's been, not problem, but issue, that's come up in several types of things. And we... The community would like a better definition of what we're doing there. That's a one-liner. That's all I'll say about that.
Well, let's go back. Where do you want to put council training? Under what objective, or what goal?
Under the committed city workforce.
Yeah, that would be...
I like it.
Just for clarity. This is the one?
Per person, yeah. Yeah.
You know where that's going, Suzanne? That's going under professional and committed city workforce?
Yeah, I'll... Well, we don't have to talk about that tonight. We'll take them, and we'll...
You'll place them?
This is a whole bunch of ideas. The staff's very capable of putting them where they do, in my opinion, anyway. So the next one...
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead. You know what? We're going to have to ask you, because people are listening at home.
There you go.
So your first objective is the education for council. So it's clarified, because I'm a little confused. Is it policies and procedures of how you operate, education? Can you clarify?
Oh, for instance, would be, maybe we don't know anything about zero-based budgeting, and the city wants to consider it, and the whole council says, what the heck is that? So we get a video, and we play it, and it costs us 300 bucks or something. That kind of thing.
Okay. That clarifies for me specifically...
That's just one example, but that... Is that the flavor? Kind of makes sense?
Thank you.
So one thing that works in private industry, has worked well, worked in my corporations, was an incentive efficiency program. And that, of course, is a full benefit. There's a plus on the budget for that. And you can read the details of this, but it's incentive efficiency. I call it staff knows best incentive program, because they do. And you can read all this. This is all, whatever.
So you would want to put that one under professional and committed city workforce?
I think Mike's going to handle that.
Mike's going to handle the classification.
Okay.
The next one, and I'm not going to read all the paragraphs, because you can all read them, but the next one is electronic voting tote systems. I've been on the Board of Adjustment in the city council for 12 years, and it would be wonderful if we had simultaneous voting that would be a public thing. In other words, we're not affecting each other by raising hands one at a time in a roll call. I looked up one that's viable. It's 3,500 bucks, but this is one that Suzanne and I talked about. She'd really like to have, unless she won't back me right now. This is one that Suzanne had a... would like to have.
Tote system.
And me, too. I've wanted it ever since I was on Board of Adjustment. And like I say, these are all ideas. We're just throwing stuff out on the table. That's why I really want to hear from the staff. So the Cassell system upgrade is something Mike and I know have talked about several years, and he... That's up to him if he wants to go. I'm very supportive of one. I was ex-CFO on one of my... I was also CEO, but I was also doing all the accounting stuff at one of my corporations. So I'm very merry with not having to do double journal entries.
Excuse me one second. When you're placing these, if possible, could you put the cost associated with it?
If it's available at the time, but...
If it's possible.
Like we were talking about, staff's going to have to go back and research each one of these.
Sure, Stan.
That's why we need consensus on it. For example, I already have a cost on that.
Okay, good.
But just in general, all these objectives, it may take some time to research.
Just a question. You also have sales tax that's on ADG. You also have... Help me, I forget what else. Payroll on ADG.
Cash receipting.
Cash receipting, all those modules. Is your cost include upgrading all of those to Cassell or ADG?
Those, and then some. I had Cassell quote me on pretty much every module they have, and then as, like, from a menu, we would choose, for example, we don't have... We don't use ADG for cemetery, but they have a cemetery module.
Right.
Depending on cost, that may be something that we'd like to have.
So... But it's not cost prohibitive to incorporate all of your systems under Cassell at one time, not just GL? General ledger?[1794.83]
I would, if we went with Cassell, I'd definitely want the ones that you mentioned just now with Cassell.
Okay.
Maybe cemetery management would come later.
And then additions would come later.
Yes.
But I would expect you to come back to us and say, "Hey, my software right now is all over the map and these are my proposals."
But those are just existing systems under ADG that would not be integrated unless you buy all those modules.
So the next one, I'm sorry.
We read it?
The next one, it says, "Finish second part of the audio problem." So we still have an audio streaming problem. That's a, that's a problem that still exists today. My wife watches it all the time and it's just in and out and it's a terrible thing. One of the people in the audience who streams has zero problems. So we know we've got a problem there. It's just something we need to address somehow. And the problem is because it's our mandatory records protocol. And so because it is, it should be a priority. I'm talking to our new city manager also. So we've all seen the security improvements around. I'd like to finish, I, somebody, this actually wasn't me, this was Mr. Consulman Sawyer. Finish security improvements in all city facilities.
I can elaborate.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
It's kind of funny because last year I recommended a security camera at that city hall. Have we installed it yet? I also recommended that we put a buzzer door like they have at the school where you always have someone at the front desk, hit the buzzer, there's a camera there. It actually takes a picture of the person at the door and then that person is let in. I believe we're behind the curve on security here at city hall. I'd rather be safe than sorry. I feel like we're just, eventually something's going to happen and we're going to all look at each other and go, "Well, why didn't we do that?" Well, we're talking about it, so let's, let's.
But if we ultimately prioritize the goals and the objectives, some things are going to have to fall out. On a suggestion like that, which I would agree, you want to be safe than sorry, I'd go back to our security expert and say, "Is this something that we need to spend money on this year if we're trying to address some of our other goals and objectives?"
Well, when I, when I was writing these goals and objectives, I'll say it more objectives, my focus and goal was to, to solve a problem. That's really what I wanted.
Is there a problem now?
There is a problem, period. It's just, are we willing to make that next step to solve it? I'll go, I'll skip one because mine was the IT department in the house. I'm right now working with a company to get the DOD certification with their servers, their networks, all their computer systems, the VPNs, and it is very critical that we consider going to secure the system. And there's consultants out there that do it. They can come in and give us quotes and make sure we're hacker-proof. I'll just put it simple like that and that all our, that our information is secure. We're not being, our information is not being hacked by, I hate to say this, China, but it's happening and it's happening quite often. And I have a meeting with this consultant actually on Friday to talk about working with this DOD contractor of their system. So I think this is very important. I think we're kidding ourselves that our data is secure. So I can bring more information to you on this and how to go to the next step. I know you're well aware of the IT problems. So that's where I stand with that. I truly believe we are too old school, but we need to step into the 21st century.
I just would say that I know that any information that is protected information, so security numbers, credit card numbers, employee numbers, employee records, we don't have that information stored electronically. Our vendors that process credit card payments, that's all stored offsite and encrypted. It's, we don't have any of that in-house. It's not on our computers. It's not on our machines. Payroll, that's all encrypted. I don't know. I don't, I don't know. That may be a priority, but I just know it wasn't a problem. It's one of the things that we considered when we went with all the online payment processing services that we added to finance, for instance, the sales tax filing, the utility bill payment, all of those things. We chose vendors and chose payment processors that store that data. We don't own it. We don't have it.
Let me interrupt you here. So a consultant coming in and telling us that we're okay, that's what I want.
And how much do you think that would cost?
I want the consultant to prove you're right.
How much would that cost?
I don't know.
Our auditors do that?
Oh, probably.
Can I interject for a moment? As, you know, as the council knows, our insurance company is SIRSA, and every year we go through an audit. As part of our audit, we go through our security measures and with our data, we have a whole list of sheet and our IT person looks at it, fills out, and then SIRSA says, "Okay, you guys are doing good." So we have something like that.
The auditors do it too.
We know.
Mayor and council, I'd like to add to that. Our auditors, our independent auditors also come in and look at our information technology systems and they actually did a thorough report. Actually, it probably could have been more thorough, but they did give us, and I think I included it in the packet to you when the auditors were here, their report. So there is room for improvement, definitely.
Yeah, we are doing something.
And some of it, as they said even in their report, some of it can be accomplished right away. Some of it should be, should be accomplished right away. Others, we may not have the resources to accomplish, but it's definitely something we need to have in our minds as we go in to prepare the budget related to our IT. So that's, thank you for last year approving the full-time IT position. He's been awesome as far as what he does and how he does it and how he works with employees. I guarantee that if you ask any employee within the city if they are very happy with Jeremy, our IT system support specialist, everybody would give him glowing remarks. Having said that, on top of the customer service that he's provided, he's done a ton of things and we are going to bring to council. You asked when the budget was approved last year for a six-month report on what has been accomplished, and we're going to be prepared to do that at the second council meeting in August. But, you know, again, I can't tell you thank you enough for that position. A full-time position is definitely needed. He is swamped. And he's getting things done as far as servicing the customers, but he's also thinking long-term needs and identifying strategic needs for the city's IT infrastructure and his recommendations moving forward. So he's just doing an awesome job.
Mr. Mayor, I just want the press and people to walk away thinking that we didn't have secure systems.
Understand.
Addressing those things. That's the only reason I bring it up. Thank you.
There's 40 things here. We don't have enough time. So what I'm going to suggest is I'm going to whip through a couple key ones here, but they're all in this document.
Good.
And I would suggest that we don't try to write them all down because you're going to run out of things to do. I mean, there's COPs to look at. These are all, by the way, this is all in the category of recommendations for city manager action. So in that regard, it's.
Then would you consider them part of our deliberation on the budget? I mean, there's some.
It's, it's an education to some things that different people, whoever contributed, thought were important to the discussion at this time. Some of them have budget impact or quite a few of them do have budget impact.
Are you suggesting that Mike pull those out with budget impact and then re-wicker his document? Because some of them, even if they are budget neutral, really have nothing to do with the budget. They have more to do with prescribing something for the staff and the city manager to do.
Yeah, because we're in a transition period here, it's kind of an opportunity to transition and maybe.
There's nothing wrong with looking at it.
What I'd like to add to that then is, you know, we do have a list of these city council objectives, ideas, brainstorming, whatever you want to call it. We were writing them on the board. We can stop that for now for time purposes, but we still are going to need to gain consensus from council on all of these objectives at some point in a future work session to say, "Okay, which ones do you want staff to then move forward and analyze to obtain those costs? Can we even do them? Can we actually complete them this coming year?" Or, but, but we want to take these from this list here and then hear all of the other council members' ideas. What then, I mean, with time, it sounds like we're going to have to have another meeting with all these listed out and then gain consensus from council at a future meeting.
I would suggest that there's a lot of suggestions still with all the remaining council. They've probably got a tremendous number just based on the procedures process. And where you can, I would say, make a wag on cost savings, whichever category. Then we're going to know some more facts about it. You know, what's it going to cost? It's 500,000. One costs 50 bucks. We're pricing, well, let's put the 50 buck one in there, whatever it is, right?
But again, as, as these are all listed, it's going to take time and staff time to research and how much, even to come up with a wag to do that. So before that's done, I mean, if we, if we know, like, for example, Cassell, I know that that's around 50 to 70,000 dollars. If we have it, great, but we want to narrow down the list so we're not trying to find a wag on every single objective. So that's why we want to get council consensus first before we move into determining cost and will it fit within the budget. Does council agree with, for example, there's, there's this one objective, does council agree, all agree that, yeah, this is definitely a priority. Let's find out how much it costs and then staff will go do the research.
Well, what I'd like to have by the time we meet again, right, is we've got our goals. We want everybody to contribute their objectives like Noel and Val have. So the next time we've got that complete list, so anything that anybody has, let's submit it to Mike. He'll get it in the proper place on here. And then next time when we start, we'll start with that document and we'll go from there. But I don't want to end up, I know this is easier said than done, I don't want to end up a month from now with a bunch of new objectives. So it's going to take some work from everybody so we can complete this part of the process before our next work session. Does that make sense to everybody?
It doesn't. Let me, I mentioned Suzanne has this Word document, so she can.
And Darren's got it already. Mike's got it.
The staff, I mean, the actual Word document, so they can do whatever they want.
Suzanne, would you make sure that we will, we're going to see it, what Mike puts out? You got that? Okay, good.
It seems like maybe the concept or objective in, in Words can be listed and categorized. And if we all contribute to that, then we have that document to work from to prioritize. And then those things that we prioritize and come to consensus on, then the staff can go back and put some research into.
Perfect.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, obviously, council will be case. I think that's exactly what we're trying to achieve.
Excellent. That sounds perfect.
And the staff has to work to back our objectives as well. So I think it's, it's perfect.
So.
Thank you.
The living document that Val's talking about, I think might be a little too, too much, meaning everybody add to it and then email it to everyone. So maybe we could all just come up with our own, email it to Mike. Mike can put it together. Maybe we should have a drop dead date of the objectives with the goals, under the goals. Send it to Mike. Mike can put it all together. There'll probably be some ones that are similar. And then you can send it out to all us and then we can agree on it. And then obviously, staff is going to be working on their objectives. And I, you know, I step back and I think we're going to have too many squirrels to chase. Because if you try to chase two squirrels.
Noel, the only thing I would say is consensus by email does not.
No, I don't want consensus by email. Just, he's going to put together the list and then next time we meet, then we can discuss. But I think we're, we're, when I first got on council, we had, I think, three or four goals. Was that one of my first meetings? You were there, weren't you? We had like three or four goals. So it's nice to see that council and everybody are, are working together to have more goals and objectives and really.
More is not necessarily better.
Ideas are good.
Quality.
And I'm sure there's going to be one.
Quality better than quantity.
There'll be one objective or two objective that everybody goes, "Wow, that's what we need to do." That's what I'm hoping we'll find.
So that said, got to plan another meeting and try to coincide with prior to the time the staff gets together. So what are you thinking?
I, this is what I'm hearing is you'll be sending, each individual council member will be sending your objectives and don't worry about prioritizing under the goals that we've agreed on. Now you can, as you think through your objectives, certainly look at those and say, you know, maybe pinpoint an objective, one or two or three, or however many you want, under each of those. Don't have to, but just as an idea, send those to myself. We'll compile them, put them all together in one list. Could even send that list out beforehand and then have you start thinking about what ones you like, seeing all of them. But then the consensus would be obtained at a future work session. So having said that.
Today, by the end of the day.
The next, the next item on the agenda is the budget calendar. So I just, I won't read through it, but just know that there are a couple of work sessions. This is pretty much identical with, with the exception of the day after last year, but it follows along the same timeline as last year's budget. We were looking forward to November 1st, 2018 council meeting for first reading. Second, November 15th, as you know, happened last year, we can move it. That's just the calendar. If everything goes according to this schedule, that's where that. I have a couple of work sessions identified, but I think we'll need more. We can add as many as are needed to this calendar. For example, this one, I think the next work session I have on here is October 10th. I think we'll definitely need one before that. So this is the calendar. Please send me any questions or feedback that you'd like. But this is the budget calendar as presented. Having said that, Suzanne will then talk about scheduling of future work sessions, which looks, sounds like we need to schedule one right away. And then I'll be able to give you my timeline for getting that, those emails prior to that work session.
Would it be possible to have one prior to the council meeting next week? Is that too ambitious?
I would have to join by somehow. I'm going to be out of town next week until council meeting, but I could easily do that. So it's up to you all. If you think you can get that work. We do it the week after. Suzanne, if you'll do a little doodle poll and.
Do you want to look at my calendar for a moment? Yes.
Okay. Doodle poll and maybe we'll find three options for that week after. Or we can try to decide now if everybody's.
The week after is the 23rd.
That's the Thursday.
Thursday.
But Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we could go, because we have no council, right? How about the 23rd for everybody right now? Can you look at your calendars?
Is that a Wednesday?
That's a Thursday, two weeks from today.
I'm, I'm out of town.
You're out of town. Are you out of town that whole week?
Just Thursday. Thursday night, I'm leaving.
I'm out of town 21, 22. I'll be back 22 evening.
20 is a Monday. How does 20 look?
20 works.
Can we do 20?
But I'm happy to pay attention to everything that's being sent back and forth.
Well, I, yeah, I just think it's important that we, we meet as soon as we can after we get the input that we need.
I'll send that in a little pull rather than wasting the time now.
Thank you.
I'll give a bunch of different dates that were.
And times, different times.
Is it still council consensus to happen in the evening?
You work five days a week.
Better for you, Carol. This time it works good. 5:30?
5:30 is a good time.
Everybody works well? Is that good for you, Darren?
It's an evening?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the best time.
Best time. Middle of the day wouldn't work for him. Let's try 5:30.
Okay, and I'll just put some dates out there.
Start with, start with the 20th. Yeah. Because 21, 22, 23 are all out right now.
Mike, question for you. On the budget calendar, are you not doing the public hearing, the first meeting in December because?
Just to get, have it, if everything goes according to plan, get the budget approved and adopted sooner than later, the second, or the second and reading and public hearing will likely end up in December.
It just gives us a little more space in the calendar.
Right.
I, I concur with your sentiment that why don't we just go there right now?
Well, I just wondered if there was a reason.
Only to give us time. If we can get it done sooner, there's no problem with that. If we, and it just gives us time to move it out.
Because I know we had to have some extra time last year.
And the year before.
But this, this session is going to go great. We are going to be done by second meeting.
I've got public comment on the agenda tonight. Would anybody like to speak before we adjourn?